Well, good evening. Good to see everyone tonight. It's the St. Lucie County School Board Regular Meeting, July the 11th, 2023, and it's 5:00. Let's go ahead and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, and the kids at home pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As an adult and treasure hunter, I am committed to search for all the talents, skills, and intelligence existing in all children and youth. I believe all children capable of success, no exceptions.
Please be seated. At this time, I'm going to open up the public hearing, 2.1. This is on the adoption amendments of Code of Conduct, Student Code of Conduct and Student Progression Plan. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to come forward and speak on this behalf, only on this behalf, you're more than welcome to. Seeing everyone's excited to get up, I'm going to go ahead and close this out, this hearing, and take the recommendation of the superintendent.
I recommend the board approve the proposed amendments to the Code of Student Conduct and the Student Progression Plan for elementary, middle, and high school.
Board members, you heard the recommendation of the superintendent. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
I got a motion and second. Discussion? Seeing none, those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Superintendent, I'm going to turn it over to you for special thanks and recognition, please.
All right, I'm going to ask our Chief Communications Officer, Ms. Lydia Martin, to come up to present our Star Awards. I'd ask the board, I'm going to take some pictures down.
Good evening, Chairman Ingersoll, Board Members, and Superintendent Dr. Prince. This evening, we would like to recognize a very special group of individuals who truly went above and beyond to help make our graduations a success. We faced some unexpected challenges which were out of our control, rain, and a faulty generator. However, these staff members never faltered, but instead jumped into action to ensure that graduations would go on despite these challenges. Members of this team, problem solved on the spot when the generator malfunctioned and displayed commitment and perseverance even through a heavy, yet brief, downpour. So, for their commitment to doing what it takes, we want to say congratulations to their star, to these star employees. The first are a group of individuals from the Communications Department. Thank you, Katie. And that is Jamie Barber, Steve Dublin, Craig Jerome, Grace Morrow, and Doug Simpson. Congratulations to these persistence. And we have one more group. And that concludes our Special Orders of Business for this evening. And that is some staff members from our Transportation Department and IT. First, we have Larry Beckham, Rob Diamato, Albert Diaz, Thomas Giannini, Eric Hennig, From Transportation, we have Mark Koknauer, Mitch Miller, John Stam, and John Keonis. Lorna Lewis Allen, Jeanette Marin, Bob Massa, and Carolyn Rarick.
We're going to go ahead and move the ESOL report.
And from IT, we have Antonio Vargas. Please come forward to accept your reward. You guys can please come forward. Congratulations. Congratulations.
ESO. ESOL. Yep, got that one right. Not seeing anyone, CWA report? Seeing nothing. Moving on to Consent Agenda. Board members, we need to adopt this Consent Agenda. Do I have a motion?
I'll second that.
I have a motion, I have a second. Discussion? None. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Mr. Superintendent, can I have the recommendation, please?
I recommend the board approve the Consent Agenda as submitted.
Board members, you heard the recommendation of the superintendent.
So moved.
Got a motion?
Second.
Second. Discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, 5-0. Mr. Superintendent, your remarks, please.
Okay, just a couple of things before I get rolling. First of all, we do have a number of folks here for our reception immediately following our board meeting tonight to kind of introduce a lot of our new administrators and some of our promotions. I'm looking forward to seeing everyone upstairs. First of all, I wanted to kind of just recognize and ask them to stand our new Assistant Principals. Tammy Davis, from C.A. Moore. Tammy, do you have any family here? All right. Awesome. Tammy is one of our elite students. Congratulations. I'm so happy for you, and I was so happy to get an opportunity to be one of your instructors when you went through your Ed leadership. So, congratulations. I'm also going to recognize at this time Sherri Vasquez, from Mariposa. Once again, Sherri, I'm going to ask you, do you have any family there you'd like to stand? All right, you've got your fan base there, so congratulations. I'm very excited for you, Sherri. Awesome. We're also very excited to welcome Heather Alfonso, from Parkway. Heather, congratulations. I'm glad you brought your better half, David Alfonso, the new principal at Westwood, who was with us last month, so congratulations. And also, we had one more appointment, Derek Gordon, at Fort Pierce Westwood Academy. Derek could not be here, but Derek is coming to us from Broward County, so we're very excited to have Derek. The other thing is, I wanted to introduce some new folks that are with our district, and I'm going to ask those folks to come and invite them up to the podium to say a few words to the board. Once again, I want to thank the board. The board sets the tone for the district, and whenever you are recruiting folks from outside of the district, they look at the stability of your situation, your board, and I'm truly happy that the board truly sets an amazing tone for our district, that we can recruit the best and brightest from other places. So, coming to us from the county is Nicole Fogarty. She is the Coordinator of Growth Management, Land Acquisition, and Intergovernmental Relations. Nicole, can you come forward, please?
Thank you very much. First and foremost, I stand before you today filled with excitement and gratitude as I accept this offer. As many of you know me, and I look forward to getting to know some of you, sorry, I didn't know I was going to be first, so I have to get prepped here. I was kind of hoping the first guy was going to go. You always want to be last when it's speech time. But like I was saying, this is definitely an honor, and I'm really looking forward to being a part of this organization. As you know, I was a part of this organization as a, I guess you can say, a contract person, working with the county, with our joint partnership with them, and working with lobbying Tallahassee and Washington, D.C. But a little bit about myself, unfortunately, my family's not here. They're still on vacation in Indiana, lucky. But I came back so I can properly be here to accept this offer and to thank you, Dr. Prince, the entire team here, and I really look forward to working with you and accepting new challenges and hopefully being a part of your successes in the future. So, thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. And I can't tell you, Nicole's reputation with the county precedes itself, and I'm so excited to be able to get someone new with St. Lucie County Public Schools of your caliber, so very, very excited. So, thank you, Nicole. Next, I want to introduce a new Administrator on Special Assignment for the Family and Community Engagement, Dejean Jackson. Where's Dejean? Come on up.
Good evening, Superintendent Prince, Chairman Ingersoll, and Board Members. I stand humbly before you today, excited to accept this challenge of continuing to serve in my community, St. Lucie County, in the role of Family and Community Outreach Administrator on Special Assignment. Dr. Prince, when you offered me this position, you shared your vision of the work that is to continue in this community. And in your words, you said, "Go out and be a disciple, sharing great works that are happening in our schools." This is easy to do in St. Lucie Public Schools. I say that because the fabric of this community, the church family, civic leaders, and family by blood, are all found within St. Lucie County, and they're the ones who raised me, nurtured me, and pushed me to be a servant leader in our district. I could not do the work that I do without visionary leaders like our executive directors, my fellow principals, community members, and also organizations such as my sorority who came out to support tonight. In all of them, there was an unwavering belief that I could do anything or be anyone that I envisioned. God has truly smiled on me. I am so fortunate to get paid to do what I love, and that is the work in the community that I hold so near and dear to my heart. Thank you for allowing me to work in my dream career surrounded by friends, by family, and by colleagues that are the change makers in this world. There's an old African proverb that says, "It takes a village to raise a child." I am surrounded by this village. Joining me tonight are the chieftains, the waymakers, and family that have nurtured me on this journey. If you would indulge me, I would ask that my family, either by blood or by bond, please stand up, whether you are principal, whether you are my family members, whether you have come all the way from Fort Lauderdale representing the church, whoever you are, please stand to be recognized because you make a difference in the lives of children each and every day. I am humbled by this opportunity to do this work in our community and for St. Lucie Public Schools. Again, I say to you, Dr. Prince, thank you.
I really appreciate the fact that you've already started your community engagement by having so many, by having so many folks here. So, we are excited to bring your leadership to the district, and not just that, but to be an emissary for the good works that we're doing in the district in communicating what's important, and also getting, you know, community engagement, family engagement, those are priorities moving forward for me, and I couldn't think a better person than you to fill that role. So, congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
So, I was going to see if Brian Ruther is here. Is Brian here? Can you see if he's out there?
He left early.
Yeah, today's...
There he is.
Brian. Brian. Brian is our director, soon-to-be former director of Safety and Security. Brian, is today your last day?
No.
No, when is it?
I just want to let you know, I work right to the end.
So, Brian, it is, it's your, it's your last board meeting, right?
Yes.
Okay, now, I'm surprised you weren't ready for this, but I was just going to ask you to say a few words. I just want to, first of all, say thank you to Brian. Brian was one of the first folks I met when I came into the district, had a very, just a wonderful relationship with you, working with Safety and Security. And I'll also say, every single year, Brian's department had the highest ratings with customer satisfaction to our most important customers, and that's our principals. So, I want to say thank you to all that you do, but I give you one opportunity to address the board before you're a civilian coming to complain about something.
Thank you, Doc.
And when you do, you go, "Troy, don't come to us."
Yeah, Troy. Thank you. I have members of board, thank you for this opportunity. Dr. Prince did mention to me a couple of weeks ago, he was going to say some nice things about me, so I appreciate it, Doc. But actually, I wasn't prepared, because I do have a 64-slide PowerPoint that I'd like to put in here, so, but I appreciate, one of the reasons why I think we're successful in the Safety and Security Department is because of the support that we have from our current board as well as past boards. We've done a lot of projects. I was looking back, and I sent Doc a report and Terrence a report on the Safety and Security, the significant projects that we've implemented since 2013. We've done 75 projects to enhance the safety and security of our schools. So, that's something that we take, very important to us, we take it very seriously. We appreciate the board's support. I want to thank Doc for his support, also because we couldn't do what we did if it wasn't for the board. And Doc, I'd like to also thank Terrence O'Leary, my current boss, and he's been very supportive also. We have Troy Church coming on board. Troy is going to do an excellent job. If not, I'll be back. But I like to thank, actually, I also like to thank my wife Ruth Ann and my family. This is my, actually, I'm starting my 47th year in law enforcement, so, and I'm... And I'm finishing up on a high note, so I'm going to go fishing the first week of, when these kids are back, the first week of, second week of August, so I'll be out there in the St. John's River. But I want to thank everyone. The cabinet, I can tell you, I've done this for 46 years. I've seen a lot of great chiefs, a lot of great leaders. I've learned from the good ones, "Oh, you need to do more of that." I've learned also from the poor ones that you don't want to do any of that. But I can tell you, the caliber of the people that we have on Cabinet, the superintendent's staff, is outstanding. I would say they're the best group of people, command-level people that I've ever worked with, and you should be very proud of the people that you have serving you, as well as serving the district and the staff and employees, because they are outstanding. I want to thank all the cabinet members that are here for your support of me and my department over the last 11 years, and I sincerely appreciate that. And with that, I'll be like Homer Simpson, I'll just fade into the bushes.
Brian, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And now, we're going to segue into Brian's replacement, Mr. Troy Church. Troy?
Well, that was a great segue. He took 50% of everything I was going to say, so that's all right. Good evening. I'm both honored and humbled to be here tonight to address you as the newly-selected Director of the Department of Safety and Security for St. Lucie Public Schools. After 32 years with St. Lucie County Sheriff's Office, I began as a volunteer sheriff's explorer and retired as lieutenant and shift commander in 2019. As an explorer in 1987, I volunteered with the newly-minted School Resource Department under Michael Sumner at Dan McCarty Middle School for an entire school year. Later, in early 2000, I worked as a School Resource Supervisor for the Sheriff's Office, and here I am again, being drawn back to the district. Through the last 28 years, I have had my wonderful educator and wife, Robin, to thank for her support in allowing me, and sometimes reluctantly, to learn more about our challenges and roles in teaching. This also included quite a bit of carrying boxes to the school in August and away from the school, back home to our garage in June. With that, we really, we lean a lot on our faith in Jesus in our household. We really treat people with dignity, respect, and kindness, and that's got to go far. It sets a culture. And one of the greatest things I got to say here at this point with what Brian Ruther was saying, what a team and what a culture we have. And it not just goes just with the Department of Safety and Security, but all the way through, just as he mentioned, with all the folks in the cabinet, all the folks that we deal with. It has been an amazing time that I've been here since 2020, so it's really been a good thing. But for that, as a law enforcement and teaching family, we've seen many aspects of the challenges we have in this district, and we know firsthand the incredible growth that we're in the midst of and the potential of, oh, the places that we will go. Safety and security has a unique and special role in education of our children. We take the heart, the district mission, of ensuring all students graduate from safe and caring schools equipped with the knowledge and skills and desire to succeed. You cannot effectively learn if you're worried about your safety. You cannot effectively teach if you're completely scared or upset or anxious about and unsure about what actions to take in an emergency. I wear this stand with Parkland Band on my arm all the time. I have pictures of those who lost their lives in that tragedy next to my computer screen. This is the seriousness of our department. Through the dedicated folks before me, Dave Morris, Brian Ruther, Mark Woods, and an incredible team that I work with, we have a very strong foundation that we're building upon, and I can't thank all of them enough. And I'll finish with this quote from Dr. Seuss, "Unless someone like you cares a whole awful lot, nothing is going to get better. It's not." Thank you for the trust and confidence you have in me as the Director of Safety and Security. Now, we get to get to work.
Thank you, Troy. The last introduction is going to be critically important to the success of the district. A lot of thought went into the selection of this individual, and I'm going to introduce at this time Dr. Craig Summer, our new Chief of Schools, coming to us from Palm Beach County.
Thank you, Dr. Prince. Good evening, everybody. First off, Dr. Prince, thank you very much. It's an honor, number one, that you believe in me, so for that, I appreciate that, not for the opportunity, but for the responsibility. Really appreciate it. Look forward to working with you. I have not learned more from somebody from a distance, and I'm honored to be working with you every single day, so appreciate you. Let's give him a big round of applause, everybody. Come on, he's my boss. Distinguished Board Chairman, Chairman Ingersoll, Vice Chair Holly, I've been watching your board meetings, and I just want to say, I'm humbled to be here and serve this incredible community. And first of all, this is the most fun I've ever had at a board meeting, and I'm only about 17 minutes in. The culture that you've created and the district that you govern is incredible, and I'm truly honored to be a part of it. Again, the responsibility is what I'm looking forward to, and when we talk about service, we know that when we look at our org chart, at the top is our community. So, I'm sincerely looking forward to getting to know all the community members, business partnerships, parents, residents, and then, of course, at the top is the students, which is really why I got into this work. I was humble enough and naive enough to believe that I could make a difference in the world when I got an education, and I do believe, not to be overly dramatic, that we be better and we change lives every single day and we save lives. So, I'm looking forward to doing that here in this beautiful county. And then, of course, we heard Ms. Jackson talk about, "It takes a village to raise a child," so that touched me, and I love that, and that's the truth. And when we talk about a village, look at the incredible people that are here and staff and the principals that are coming to this reception. Big round of applause for them. And I'm going to probably leave somebody out, but I'll say assistant principals, I'll say teachers, I'll say paraprofessionals, bus drivers, custodians, office staff, and the groups I'm leaving out, I'll get to you, I'm sorry. The name escapes me, security staff. I really want to thank also Dr. Wild, Mr. O'Leary, for making me so comfortable, being here the last week, and the rest of the group, Lydia. Thank you guys so much. So, I'm really excited, and I'll put a little damper on this, or maybe this is a good thing. I can just count out, we've got 13 days until teachers come back.
Yeah.
So, I'll stop talking right now, because we've got a lot of work to do. And I look forward to doing it with all you guys, so thank you so much, Dr. Prince, appreciate you.
Thank you. Thanks, Dr. Summer.
And have a good night, everybody.
Speaking of, it never ends, the last day for our summer school is July 13th, and for a lot of folks, the year never ended. We've got a number of teachers, clerks, school administrators, support staff, bus drivers, you name it, that are supporting our students each and every day in our summer camps, our summer programs. Right now, we have almost 4,000 students a day in our district coming to one of our summer programs, a very rigorous summer program. I want to thank the folks in teaching and learning, and also our, really, our APs. I found the greatest training ground to be a principal was to be a summer school administrator, because you're doing everything. And I want to thank all of those summer school administrators who got tapped on the shoulder to say, "Hey, can you do a month of this?" So, and a lot of them I see are here tonight, so thank you so much for the work that you do. I wanted to also mention some upcoming events. July 18th, board members, we have our summer graduation, and that's at Fort Pierce Central at 8:30. Once again, that's July 18th, just next week. And I'd also like to invite the board members to our Leadership Kickoff, which is at 7:45 in the morning at Fort Pierce Central, and you will get an official invite from me for that as well, and I'm looking forward to welcoming back all of our principals, administrators, and district leaders for that presentation. Spoiler alert, you already saw some of it at the board workshop, so I just wanted to let you know. And then, August 1st, you got the notification that we moved our regular board meeting from August 8th to August 1st, and that's to comply with the law with regards to our TRIM notice and the presentation we have to give on that particular day. Lastly, I'd remind all of our administrators and folks, you're welcome to come upstairs to our reception, and that's the public, if you're here to recognize one of the folks that are in a new role or an assistant principal or a principal, we won't be here long, but I really wanted to start a new tradition to recognize the folks, you know, most of our, many of our promotions occur over the summertime, particularly in the months of June and July, and I just wanted to make sure that we're recognizing those folks as they start off in their new careers. I wanted to add one last thing before I move on to a couple of nuts and bolts things we have to do for the meeting, is I want to thank our principals and assistant principals for a fantastic year. I couldn't have been blessed with the first-year superintendent with a smoother-running year, and that's a tribute to the administrators and the folks in our schools, from our bus drivers to our clerks, to our food service, to our teachers, to our APs, to our principals. Everybody that touches a child and touches their life really came through. We had a lot of successes this year. We passed a referendum that generates over $30 million for our district for school security, teacher pay, fine arts, the mental health services for our students. We renewed our accreditation. We also started a new chapter with regards to testing, and our teachers had to learn new standards and a new scope and sequence, so I want to thank everyone for the work that they put into that. You also probably don't remember that we had to open shelters, and we had hurricane days. You know, all of those things that we kind of go through the year, and it seems like a real tough time at that moment, you know, we got through those things, and I just want to just humbly thank the folks that are in our buildings that really make school the best part of every child's day, and that is the goal that I have for the district, is to make sure that that happens. So, at this time, there's two other items that I have for...
And I want to thank all of those summer school administrators who got tapped on the shoulder to say, hey, can you do a month of this? So, and a lot of them I see are here tonight, so thank you so much for the work that you do. I wanted to also mention some upcoming events. July 18th, board members, we have our summer graduation, and that's at Fort Pierce Central at 8:30. Once again, that's July 18th, just next week. And I'd also like to invite the board members to our leadership kickoff, which is at 7:45 in the morning at Fort Pierce Central, and you will get an official invite from me for that as well. And I'm looking forward to welcoming back all of our principals, administrators, and district leaders for that presentation. Spoiler alert, you already saw some of it at the board workshop, so I just wanted to let you know. And then August 1st, you got the notification that we moved our regular board meeting from August 8th to August 1st, and that's to comply with the law with regards to our TRIM notice and the presentation we have to give on that particular day. Lastly, I'd remind all of our administrators and folks, you're welcome to come upstairs to our reception, and that's the public if you're here to recognize one of the folks that are in a new role or an assistant principal or a principal. We won't be here long. But I really wanted to start a new tradition to recognize the folks, you know, most of our, many of our promotions occur over the summertime, particularly in the months of June and July, and I just wanted to make sure that we're recognizing those folks as they start off in their new careers. I wanted to add one last thing before I move on to a couple of nuts and bolts things we have to do for the meeting, is I want to thank our principals and assistant principals for a fantastic year. I couldn't have been blessed with the first year superintendent with a smoother running year, and that's a tribute to the administrators and the folks in our schools, from our bus drivers to our clerks, to our food service, to our teachers, to our APs, to our principals. Everybody that touches a child and touches their life really came through. We had a lot of successes this year. We passed a referendum that generates over $30 million for our district for school security, teacher pay, fine arts, the mental health services for our students. We renewed our accreditation. We also started a new chapter with regards to testing, and our teachers had to learn new standards and a new scope and sequence, so I want to thank everyone for the work that they put into that. You also probably don't remember that we had to open shelters and we had hurricane days. You know, all of those things that we kind of go through the year, and it seems like a real tough time at that moment, you know, we got through those things. And I just want to just humbly thank the folks that are in our buildings that really make school the best part of every child's day, and that is the goal that I have for the district, is to make sure that that happens. So at this time, there's two other items that I have for the board to consider. The first is the norms. In March, we had a board retreat, and we made some adjustments to our norms, and I'm asking the board, at this time, I'm going to recommend that the board approve those for the 23-24 school year. Mr. Chair?
Board members, you heard the recommendation of the superintendent? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I got a first and a second. Discussion? Mrs. Richardson?
Yes, with reference to the...
Mrs. Richardson, can you move your microphone closer to you so I can hear you?
Oh, can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. With reference to the protocols, the norms, there is, again, the visitation of the schools where it is, the law says, and I can read the law, that says that we have, do have access unannounced. The part that I, that spoke to me was, and the board member shall, not should, but shall. That should and shall makes a very big difference as to whether I shall or should. So I, at this point, not, I'm going to vote against that for that reason. Nothing trumps. It's a state law, and nothing trumps the state law, not even protocols.
Okay, I recommend the board approve this submitted for a vote.
Since we're discussing it, I just wanted to read aloud, "State law allows board members to visit schools at any time unannounced. Board members wishing to visit a school shall check with the school principal about the best time to visit a school following campus guidelines for visitors, signing a badge, whatever. Respect staff time, allow staff to perform their duties, not to evaluate staff, and not to give direction to any staff or students." And it's great that principals are here because I understand how busy you are and the situations that arise. No day is the same day. Every day is a different day. I've never heard that you've had the same day three times in a row. Something different's happening. And from this perspective, and I know the board members feel the same, or probably feel the same way, is that it's not fair just to stop in or to the school and say, a board member's here, and that's basically what we're asking, is just to check in with the school principal in advance. Hey, I'm telling you, Texas, today a good day for me to stop by? Because principals, I know you guys have a lot of, lot of, lot of things going on at your school, and as a board member, that's the way I feel, is we should give you an opportunity to say, hey, I'm in the area. If you want me to come by, I'll come by, but if it's not a good day, I'm not going to knock on your door. And that's where I stand on the situation.
I also wanted to add, may I add something, Mr. Chair?
I guess you can, yeah.
Yeah. No, I'm just saying, in the second to the last bullet on ongoing professional development, state law allows board members to visit schools at any time unannounced. Board members wishing to visit a school shall check with the school principal about the best time to visit a school. Previously, it was in the norms that the board members check in with the superintendent. I accommodated that request, that that not, that be stricken from the record, because I said it was unnecessary that board members per state law do have the ability to go to a school unannounced. I just want the record to reflect that in our norm meeting, that I tried to accommodate that request by making that accommodation to have that stricken. Thank you.
Mr. Kelly, you have something to say, or Dr. Mills?
Yeah, I have a comment to make on the shall versus the should. We know that the law is definitely saying that what we can do. Our protocols, as I understand it, is the way that we would like to practice certain things, but it has nothing to do with the actual law. If I want to walk into a school at any time, I will walk into the school at any time because the law says I can do that and should do that if I desire. But I'm also the type of person that there is no reason unless there's something seriously wrong in a particular school that I need to address or I need to look at. So I'm good with the, with the should, knowing that that doesn't supersede the law.
Yes, ma'am. I appreciate that. Mr. Kelly, do you have something to say?
Only that I agree with everything you said. That may be a first. I don't know what...
I appreciate that, Jack.
I agree with exactly what you said. And the word should has quite a connotation, but what it really is, is we're talking about a courtesy here, you know, and that's what it is. It's a courtesy, and I agree with what you just said, Dr. Mills, also. So the should, it's a courtesy, that's all.
Ms. Hawley?
Yes. You know, I've been on the board for multiple years now, and it's always been my practice to follow the protocol and that, and most of you principals know, I will call and, or text or write and say, you know, when's a good time? I'd really love to come and visit. And it does parlay into the courteousness of it, because to walk into some, to a school site where a crisis could be happening, or testing could be happening, so many things that we don't even know about, to interrupt, to me, I in no way would supersede the law. I know I can go to any school, but unless it's an emergency-type situation, that I will always continue to reach out to the principal of the school and set up a good time to come and visit and see all the great things that are going on in the good schools here in St. Lucie County. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second. We've had discussion. We're going to close discussion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries for one.
The second is the goals. The goals for 23-24 were presented to the board with justification of the reasoning behind the goals at the June workshop. The first is my biggest priority. We have a huge challenge with attendance for our students. I'll be presenting to the board next month, hopefully, our comprehensive plan to improve attendance in our schools. If students are not in school, it impacts all of their learning, and we have serious issues at all levels of elementary, middle, and high school. The second goal is to improve math performance. I think that we've lagged significantly behind where we should be in math, and we've looked at other districts that are outliers, to look at their scope and sequence, their curriculum, their supplementals, to try to provide some potential solutions or courses of action. We will be presenting that to the board in late July. The same thing with improving our literacy and our reading. That is another priority that I have, grades three through 10. Once again, if you can't pass the algebra exam and you cannot pass the 10th grade reading exam, you can't graduate. So that is something that is going to be a priority, and once again, we're looking at districts that are true outliers in performance measurements to see if we can look at what they're doing in their districts that can provide us alternatives and solutions. The last is kind of creating a five-year strategic action plan. And in our strategic action plan, I hope that will be a framework and basically a roadmap for future goals that will be mapped out over the next five years, that will deal with a number of issues that are important to me. My priority is always student safety, so because it's not a specific goal doesn't mean it's not my priority. Everybody understands that our number one priority in school is to keep kids safe. The other, though, is I think there's some things that we have to look at doing better, especially with regards to clean energy, energy conservation, and being better stewards of our planet and our environment. And there are some initiatives that we're putting or hope to put in our five-year strategic plan that will save the district money. When we save the district money, we're better able to compensate our employees, and the bottom line is we want to be good stewards of our taxpayer dollars. Another component of that will be our facilities, our five-year capital plan, also our growth plan, because we're building multiple new schools over the next five, six years. And a big component of that is DeJean and her parent and family outreach. And lastly, just making sure, going back to, you know, our goals, all of our resources need to be aligned with our district priorities. And I do believe a strategic plan provides a framework for what our priorities are as a system and how we need to designate our resources to best achieve the goals and the outcomes that we want. And that's, I'm submitting that for the board's approval. Mr. Chair?
Okay. It's on 20.1. Okay, yes, ma'am. Dr. Mills?
I have a motion on the floor.
I move.
You have a, okay, that's a first. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Discussion? Okay, I'm going to, at this time, I'm going to do a roll call, and then at the end, I'm going to give an opportunity to have the superintendent to finish his remarks.
We're talking about just approving the goals.
See, that's what I was thinking.
Yes, we're approving the goals.
I was lost. I'm sorry. I have a motion, second. Discussion? I'm a lost bird. Go ahead, Mr. Richardson.
So when it comes to the goals, the goals are very...
Oh, Mrs. Richardson, I can't hear you. Sorry about...
The goals are subjective to me, and we have said before, I've said before, that I would prefer to have more measurable goals, so that's my discussion.
Any other discussion? We discussed this at the workshop, and I'm pretty sure people know how we feel.
Just... Can I talk?
Yes, sir.
I don't know.
Sorry. Go ahead.
Just, just a reminder, what we're doing here, these are goals that we're trying to implement, and just like goal number four, which is everything that we're talking about before, it's to create and implement a five-year strategic plan. We haven't done it yet. So what the metrics are going to be, John has to tell us what he's going to use for metrics or whatever. This hasn't been created yet, so it's something that's in for... And also, as I've mentioned many times, when you have goals like this and you have a five-year strategic plan, that plan is a living document. Am I correct?
Yes, sir.
Am I correct when I say that? The five-year plan would be a living document. Maybe, could you explain what I mean by a living document also?
Yes, thank you, through the chair, to the board. So the five-year plan would be a document, it could be a living document, meaning that it could be changed and updated from time to time. It would be something that the superintendent would prepare with staff that would, you know, be brought to the board, and any updates to it would be brought to the board as well. Thank you.
Thank you. It just, I know everybody knows that, but I just wanted to repeat it. So to vote against something, I'm not going to vote against something that's not even created yet. That's all I'm saying. That's basically, you know, it has to be created. And a five-year plan, I've never been on any board, I've been on many boards, never been on any board where a five-year plan has made it pass a second year where we didn't have a significant change due to economic development or changes in staff or whatever. This is something we just planned to do, and of course, I got to vote to plan to do something, so that's all I wanted. I hope, making myself clear, I hope.
Oh, yes, sir. I mean, we're sitting in a building that we never planned on building, but through circumstances, it ended up on the five-year plan, the shortlist, real quick for obvious reasons. So, I mean, you could look at growth and population and everything else, you know, you can plan one way, but, you know, things change. So, yes, it is a living document, and we do need to make sure that we have it firmed up because it really hasn't been adjusted in some areas, parent outreach and some other things, that we're going to have initiatives going forward before the voters here pretty soon. So, yes, I think we do need to have all these goals written out, and I think your vision and the way that you've handled this, Mr. Superintendent, has been incredibly with foresight and with, with knowledge of everybody, the experts that you sit with at your cabinet. It's very evident, so.
And as far as metrics, I mean, the last meeting we had, you gave us metrics I didn't even know we had. Some of them actually might have been redundant, so, but it's good to have metrics, and the more, the better, and that's the only we can, we can tell that we're doing a good job. So I agree with the metrics. Yep, we need them.
Any other discussion on these goals?
As I remember our last meeting, we talked about the goals being, these goals are general goals, but we did, Superintendent, I remember you saying that you would bring to us certain measurable as we move forward. Am I correct with that?
I tried to define what measurable goals are in our June 26th or 27th workshop. I'm going to be basically given the same message probably that you'll see on July 24th to our principals about what, what does success look like and what do you really need to look at when you determine success, when, when you have some of the inherent challenges that our district has. I can tell you this, in 2014, when the FSA first started, that's the Florida Standards Assessment, the proficiency was 52%, grades three through 10. The last year of the FSA was 2022, the proficiency for the state in grades three through 10 was 52%. So it's, 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 what you have to make a determination is, when it comes to our district and our standing, are we improving our standing in the state, or are we regressing our standing in the state? And I would argue to you, my standard is to try to get closer to where the state is because they've always outperformed us from a proficiency standpoint. I'd also like to say, and all of our principals know the answer to this, is we do a great job getting kids on grade level, especially when it comes over time with learning gains. And that's, and you'll see them nodding their heads because they understand that, is that that is how we, because many of our kids come to us with such a low kindergarten readiness, and that's one of the, some of the initiatives we're trying to do is improve our kindergarten readiness, is to, to make sure that the students are growing more than a year in a year's time to try to reach proficiency. And I'd say that proficiency is not a true measure of how we're doing it as a district. We need to look at the growth of our students. And for the new assessment, the PM3, there are no learning gains attached to that. So next year, they will be, and that's when you can start taking and putting a number on what success looks like.
And I believe, Superintendent, that you also, at the last meeting, showed us that we had advanced and improved in every area minus the...
Math.
Math.
Yes, ma'am.
And so it's the learning gains is how we are measuring here in this district. I want to be clear.
No.
The community to be clear.
Right.
That it is, we have, we have learning gains as of 2015, I believe. And so we've, every year, we've come higher up. Am I correct on that?
So the bottom line is, we're a top-half district when it comes to the performance of our students on learning gains, and learning gains in the lowest 25%. And every single year over the last seven years, we've improved our, our state standing in proficiency. So the bottom line, in every measure of success, you know, with regards to our business and our profession, we, we're exceeding expectations, and I just want to always, and I'm going to explain this to the principals, because the principals have not seen the presentation I shared with the board. It was interesting because the principals in the month of June were going to be the guinea pigs for my board presentation, and they were going to see it first, and unfortunately, we had to cancel that, that leadership summit. So they will see what I shared with you on July 24th to kind of understand how you really have to look at the success that, that those folks out there have, have accomplished because it's been a truly heavy lift with some of the challenges that our staffs and our teachers and our principals are confronted with each and every day. And I'll put that in context again on the 24th.
Okay. Anybody else?
You know what? There is one more thing. At the last workshop, Mr. Chairman, you made a statement about, we were talking about metrics and things and how, and you said that sometimes, you know, with metrics, things can be manipulated or, I think, I think the proper word, because I kind of agreed with you, the proper word is, I think they can be misunderstood. Because there was a big one today that I read, you know, and Mrs. Richardson, I gave you credit because if you didn't ask the question or bring it up, I wouldn't know. I never knew this because I made a remark at that, that when we talked about the poverty level in our county and other counties, I said, sometimes I disagree with that. I don't know if John looked at me when I said that. And the reason being is that I misunderstood how it's done. And John answered your question today. I think it was, I guess, West Palm Beach, I guess, has one of the highest median incomes in the state, yet they have a low poverty level and they have a high amount of kids that are on lunch, you know, lunch programs, which is what we use that for. It's not based on the median income of the county. It's based on the median income. I didn't know this. It's based on the median income of the parents of the chilts. Correct me if I'm saying this wrong. Median income... median income of the parents of the children in our school district. I never knew this. I've been on the board for two and a half years. I didn't know it. So, that was misunderstood.
Mm-hmm.
And, and it was hard for me, because City of Port St. Lucie has a higher median income than Vero Beach, Stewart, or West Palm Beach. And I read that on the internet, folks, so it's gotta be true, right? It was on the internet. And so, it kind of always left me, and it, you know, it's, it's not a, the county itself is not a poor county, but I did not know that, so some things are misunderstood. Thank you for asking the question. You never know until you ask the questions.
And to your, to your point, Mr. Kelly, it's important to understand that family income of our public school students...
Right.
Is directly, directly correlated to the performance of those students. Almost directly correlated. And in our county, okay, we are a bottom-third in our state when it comes to family income of our children, okay, because of the food subsidies that they get. Yet, we are outperforming many of the districts that have the same circumstances and even more influence than we do. And that's important for our, for our folks to know, especially the professional educators that are in the audience today, because they know what they have in their schools. And they know the challenges that they have in their schools. And whenever we talk about, Mrs. Richardson raised a point about Palm Beach has one of the highest per capita's in the state, you're absolutely right. But if I've got a $30 million mansion in Palm Beach, my kid's not going to private school, or my kid's not going to one of our public schools, okay? It's, it's who is sitting in our public schools, and the families of our public schools, who do they serve? And that is the point that I was trying to make at the board workshop with regards to the performance of our students, and the performance, really, of our professional educators that are doing an outstanding job, and I wanted to, once again, thank them.
I have a question, Superintendent.
Ms. Richardson, I can't hear. I've had a long...
I'm so sorry. I guess we need to just clean out your ears or something. I don't know what to tell you.
To speak on the microphone, I'd appreciate it.
Anyway, so, the, is it my, the, the information that's on the DOE website, is that correct, or is it not correct? I mean, how are we looking at that information versus our information here? Is this not where we're getting the information from, or you're giving it to them?
No, the information on the DOE website is based on our, our free reduced lunch over both FTE periods, okay? And then, you can basically, based on the percentage of students on free reduced lunch in our public schools, you can rank order that from the lowest to the highest.
No, 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 no. I was asking just the information on the website, be it learning gains or graduation rates?
That's all done by the DOE.
That's, but they, that information comes from the district?
That, it comes, it's pulled from the district, but the, the state makes a determination of what, you know, who's counted, who's not counted.
Okay, so, if I look on the, the DOE website, and I look at that information, is that information correct per St. Lucie County School District?
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna answer your question two ways, okay? First of all, I don't know what you're looking at, okay? And, and as a professional in this business, we know how to pull information and where to pull it from. And there, we are a little bit more savvy than the layperson with regards to providing, you know, accurate information. Whenever I do a board meeting, or I do a board workshop, we vet that information through multiple lenses. It'll go through assessment, it'll go through sometimes the executive directors, just to make sure the information is accurate and can be defended. If I've got somebody that's online, or on Facebook Live, watching and questioning any information, they can call our staff. Everything that you see in a board workshop, we can, I can have somebody sit with you and show you exactly where that information is pulled.
But, but I'm still asking if that information, if I or a layperson go online and look on that information on the website, let's say, the graduation rate for St. Lucie County, is that information correct?
Correct. It, it's absolutely what we report.
Okay, so, learning gains, is that correct?
The learning gains, there are no learning gains this year.
I understand that. Okay, let, ELA results, is that correct?
What is, what is the question?
The ELA, the math, the civics, the science?
I would make an assumption that the information is correct if the state is reporting it.
Okay, that was my question.
Okay.
Let's vote. We have a motion.
I'm so moved.
I know. I said, we have a motion and a second already. We had discussion. Those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries for one. You got any more reports or comments?
I am done. The meeting is yours. It always was yours, but that's, that's the only thing, that's the only thing, that's the, those are the only things I needed to, to go through.
Appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Attorneys report?
Thank you, Chair Ingersoll, members of the board, and Superintendent Prince, there is no attorney's report.
Thank you, ma'am. We're gonna go ahead and take the superintendent's overall performance. This is the time where the superintendent has had the, where we've had the opportunity to sit with their superintendent and go over the goals and stuff, but also to, to talk about his performance, and you know his previous goals. I'm board members, I hope you've had the opportunity to do that. This is a satisfactory or unsatisfactory. It's not, oh, you know, you get a 10 out of 5. No, it's, in his contract, it's satisfactory or unsatisfactory, and, and that's it. And like I said before, this is gonna be a roll call vote. And then, Mr. Superintendent, I'll let you close it out with a few comments, brief comments. So, do I have a recommendation from the board? A motion? Ms. Holly, I need the microphone on.
I am happy to make the recommendation that we give him a satisfactory performance evaluation. I only regret that that is not a stronger word.
Yes, ma'am.
Second that motion, and I will have more to say after the, after the vote.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second. Do I have discussion?
And after the discussion, then what?
Then I vote. I'm gonna call the most, the vote. So, you know discussion? Oh, do you have, you have something to say?
And then, when we have the discussion, when we have the discussion, then you're going to call for the vote, and what? Then, then are we going to get a chance to say something afterwards, or is that it?
Sure, we can have a chance to say something afterwards. Yes, ma'am. But if you have something to say about goals or whatever, now's the time to say it, not after we vote on it.
Okay, well, I guess then, because this is not how we did it last year, so I'd like to, yes, I'd like to say something then. So, in regards, we are going to vote now?
Yes, ma'am. I'm about ready to vote, but if you have something to say...
Okay, as long as you're getting ready to vote. So, with reference to the superintendent's evaluation...
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so our core business is teaching and learning. The goals that the board is evaluating the superintendent on are, and we know the votes, the, the goals. They are to provide a safe and secure, unpredictable environment for all students and staff in schools and on the buses. Two, to improve ELA performance in grade three through 10. Three, to renew the referendum. And four, to secure district accreditation. Goals three and four were met. We gave, was, was a check mark. However, I cannot in good faith give a meeting expectation for goal number two, which is to improve ELA performance in grade three through 10, because the goal was not met per the data posted on the Department of Education's website. The superintendent himself gave himself a check minus at the June's workshop. I understand that this was a new test. However, the superintendent asked for and received the direction of the board to be evaluated on these goals and only these goals. With reference to goal number one, to provide a safe and secure learning environment, based on the information relating to discipline incidences provided to the board by the district, the data did not support our overall improvement from last year. If I'm looking at this from an accountability standpoint, the superintendent did not exceed his expectation goals for numbers one and two. I realize that this is a superintendent's first year as a superintendent, and that there is a learning curve. He needs to be given time to get a rhythm. It is important that the superintendent is successful, because his success is our success. His success is the success of our students. Every child is capable of success, no exception, and that's why we are here. I also want to be a part of the superintendent's success. In order to do this, I believe the superintendent should be held accountable in addition to being encouraged and supported to be the best superintendent he can be. So, after considering all of the above, Mr. Superintendent, I'm giving you a satisfactory review.
Ms., Ms. Harrison, can you go ahead and do the roll call for me, starting with Dr. Mills?
Yes, on the matter of the superintendent's overall performance being satisfactory. What say you, Dr. Mills?
Satisfactory.
Mrs. Holly?
Satisfactory.
Mr. Kelly?
Satisfactory.
Mrs. Richardson?
Satisfactory.
Mr. Ingersoll?
Satisfactory.
Okay, I'm gonna hold you off for a second. Board members, do you have any comments about this? I know, Mr. Kelly, you said you wanted to say something.
I have more to say, but it's, uh, more in regards to his contract than his worth. So, I will bring that up after. I think we, it's something that we need to correct. I'm, you can't hear me?
No, yeah, speak up a little bit more.
Okay, yeah, it, it's in regard to his worth. I'm talking about his salary. If, I don't know if this is the right time.
This is the right time to do it, because right now, after we get done, we're gonna charge Attorney Shaddick to go ahead and negotiate his...
This motion has been resolved. We were done with this one, okay?
Congratulations, you've been hired.
Not yet.
He's hired, Jack.
No.
Excuse me, excuse me, one moment.
Go ahead, Mr. Kelly.
I was getting worried, because the guard was watching it. It's a joke. That was very nice of you to do. I hope you agree with me on the next part. There is a, a, uh... I don't know how to put it. It's, things are not equal when you talk about, uh... Our last board meeting, I think, Dr. Mills and I said the same thing. It's, to me, uh... Everything is about interpretation. I have a young lady right there that agrees with me about that. Everything's interpretation. It is, whether it should, or could, or would, it's all interpretation. But the interpretation I, is that, at that meeting, when we talked about John and about these goals and everything, he's done a terrific job, just the staff. We gave staff more accolades, I think, than we did John at that time. But at the old, you know, for me to say this, I know, you looked at me funny when I said this the first time, but from, from New York, you would know, the fish stinks from the head. That's an old, it's an old saying. People from that area know what I mean by that. I see people smiling. It does. The, if, if things go bad, you go to the guy that's in charge. Now, the big thing for me was that, and I said it is, the big thing with me was, forget all the stuff satisfactory, I trust John, and we've heard this from our superintendent beforehand, Donna, Dr. Mills said the same thing. I trust him. That's the biggest compliment I think you could give somebody like that in that position. Along with that, and this has nothing to do, because he's never said a word or asked, is the, the problem of the word worth. What's it worth to us that we are number one, and we've done so well, came so far in the last seven years? And of course, we're number one now. And Mrs. Richardson, of course, she isn't here, but that, that, until, until Richardson and I got elected, we were not number one. Just wanna, that's a joke, folks.
It's a lagging year. It happened the year before. You got the credit.
What I'm saying, I know it is a terrible joke, Jay. Yeah, my wife's gonna yell at me. I wanna get back. The thing here is, we have the trust word, and we have the worth word. John is not, his salary is not competitive with what it should be compared to. I'm just gonna point out one county. Martin County is one-third, maybe 40 percent of the students in the schools that we have, and they, they're paying their new, and I think this is the third superintendent that they've had in three or four years down there right now. That superintendent's making $45,000 or $50,000 more than our superintendent. And, uh, it doesn't make any sense to me that worth, that doesn't, are we showing everyone in the district that we appreciate him to the worth that he is to us? I don't think we are. So, I'm not gonna make a motion now, but I'm gonna put it on the floor that I'd be willing to make a motion to increase his salary by at least, considering Martin County Superintendent makes $45,000 to $50,000 more than him for one-third of what our superintendent has. I think, I think it's worth at least, I would be willing to make a motion to give him at least a $30,000 raise or more. So, I'm not gonna make that motion. I'm gonna put it on the floor for discussion. But we are not paying the man for what he's worth.
Ms. Holly?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, thank you. I would like to suggest that we hand it over to our attorney to negotiate this with her and to exceed certainly the pay increase that is set forth in his current contract, because I like, Mr. Kelly, do not agree that it is substantial enough for the work that he does in this, in this county. So, I would like to, if it's okay with you, direct the attorney to work with Dr. Prince and come up with a comparable salary for the surrounding counties, or counties of others that are the same size as us, because we are talking about lagging. We are lagging, and that's an embarrassment to me, so I would suggest that we handle it that way.
Is that a motion?
It's a suggestion, but I can make the motion. I would cert, if, if...
I do need a motion. I'm just wondering how far this was gonna go without a motion.
If the chair will, if the chair will accept a motion, I'm happy to make a motion.
Okay, I've got a motion on the floor, and the motion states, and I could be wrong, Ms. Shaddick, we're appointing you to negotiate compensation towards the superintendent. And what I think I've heard Ms. Holly say is something comparable to counties of likewiseness, Escambia, Marion, whoever, that we need to do our research and make sure that our superintendent isn't gonna get poached by some other county. I didn't mean to put that in the motion.
Let me say, I did not say that he would be poached, because he knows better than that.
It was my thought pattern, but, yeah. So, yeah, that's, that's not the motion, but, but that's where we're sending. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, now, can we have discussion on this vote?
Yeah, I think it's very important that we, I like what, the way Ms. Holly put it. I think it's important that it, we, it's, it's something that's comparable to other counties, and what they're doing at their sizes, that's comparable to our size and so forth, to make sure that we are definitely paying him what superintendents are getting based on ours, that we can compare the size as far as the number of students, the district size. So, I would be okay with that, to do it the way that, not just like up at 30,000 or so forth, but to really look at what the surrounding counties are doing that is comparable to our size.
Okay, and just like I said, there, there's seven or eight superintendents vacancies in the state of Florida, and it, it's just a competitive market. Obviously, Mr. Superintendent, we're not, you're not leaving for another four years. He's as a child in St. Lucie Public Schools. But it's the way that you treat people along the way that we're looking for the long run. We're not looking for next year, the year before, but we're looking five, six, seven years out so that, that we're treating people fair. I don't wanna be a community that doesn't treat people fair. So, any other discussion?
Nope, I'm just glad Mrs. Holly took it further. I just threw it out there, threw a number out, and I'm, that's what I was looking for, so...
Okay, thank you. We're gonna go ahead and take a vote. Those in, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mrs. Richardson.
So, I, I have no problems. I, I don't think I have a problem. This is...
So, I, I have no problems, I, I don't think I have a problem, this is kinda just came up, I wasn't expecting this either, because this is not the way we did it with Mr. Jen the last time I was here. So, but you, I, um, I'm thinking that, yes, this should, we, we, it's probably in order, and I'm gonna have to think about this, but it's something that you have, you're going to do anyway. But by the same token, I would like us to continue to be just as generous with, and we are, but not stop or find the funds or whatever it is that we do with our regular employees. You know?
Yes ma'am.
I think that if you know, the, we know the anointing falls from the top. So, you know, as, you know, as, as we, that all of that needs to trickle down to our teachers, to everybody. You know, I'm all about sharing the wealth.
Yes ma'am.
So as long as that is done and done fairly, I have absolutely no problems with it. But, you know, I'm always an advocate or watching or whatever, and I'm, if that is going to happen, it needs to fall to everybody as their time comes around.
I wouldn't, I one hundred percent agree with you because it's market driven.
We, we, we have teachers, we need teachers, we need bus drivers, we need, we need, we need, we need.
Yes ma'am.
So we need to make sure that there's enough money in the kitty to be able to pay everybody as that we need, right?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
And, and what I was trying to get at is it's, it's market value. So whatever Indian River and, you know, Hillsboro and other counties are paying, that's what we're trying to match everybody else and that's the same with the superintendent. So, so if we're gonna match everybody else, we, we should probably start.
And let's match everybody else with our teachers and our bus drivers and.
Yes ma'am.
We, we just, we know, it has to be the same a lot down the road.
Yes ma'am, so we have a motion and we have a second. I'm gonna go ahead and close discussion, those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to renegotiate that contract. Moving on to appointment of citizen advisory committee members. Board members, you've appointed your members, can I go ahead and get a motion? I got a motion by Ms. Holly, seconded by Dr. Mills, discussion, see none, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Section, selection of FSBA advocacy committee representatives and alternate? We need to pick one?
Mr. Chair, if I might, I actually submitted this for discussion tonight. I think by default, I will become the representative because I was appointed by the FSBA president to be the advocacy chair for the state. So I will happily serve as our representative, if that's okay with the board. But we do need an alternate in that position. And if I may, I would like to suggest you, Mr. Ingersoll.
I can do that too. Don't miss any meetings.
I know your history.
Put it on my calendar. Okay, so we have a motion for Ms. Holly and then I'll be the alternate. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? See none, those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Board members report, Mrs. Richardson?
I'm going to be brief because I think I've said enough already. But I would like to congratulate, is Steve here? Steve, can you stand up for me, please? Steve Devlin, um, he, I, he just graduated from IRSC summa cum laude with his bachelor's degree in organizational management. So I just wanted to congratulate you. Yeah, I think that was quite an accomplishment, so congratulations. And I would like to also, Ms. Ava isn't here and I did not get her permission, but. Ms. Ava, are you here? Ms. Ava, would you stand up, please? Oh, Ms. Ava, Ms. Ava, do I have your permission to share your wonderful news about yesterday? Oh, Ms. Ava is a great grandma. She, yes, she has a great grandson and he was born yesterday. Congratulations, Ms. Ava. And last but not least is Ms. Bobo here. Ms. Bobo? Oh, okay, Ms. Bobo, do I have your permission to, could you stand up a little, Ms. Bobo? She's an amazing principal at Forest Grove, so, yes. And Ms. Bobo, do I have your permission to, to mention Mr. Noble's birthday? And I just did. Mr. Noble celebrated his fifty-second birthday about two weeks ago. So happy birthday to Mr. Noble, he works at Forest Grove. Miss, he's not here, but happy birthday, Mr. Noble. And, and that's it for me. Welcome to all our principals, assistant principals, everybody in their respective places. And I'll be meeting you upstairs, welcome, thank you.
Mr. Kelly?
I just wanted to welcome all our new hires and the people that you put in. Very impressed initially on everyone that you've put in place as far as our, moving around our principals. And we have some, a couple of hard, some big shoes to fill, like Marty Sanders and, and of course, Brian Ruther. I've known them both for many, many years and, uh, so far, so good. They look great. Other than that, I have nothing.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly, Ms. Holly.
I too want to say welcome again to all of our new folks. I am so excited about the upcoming school year. I mean, I know that all the people are in the right places to do the right things for all of the students in St. Lucie County and that makes me really, really happy and proud. Just tonight, just observing the culture in the room, that's a direct impact on our students. So keep it up, they need us now more than they've ever needed us before and I have every confidence in each and every one of you that you're gonna bring forth absolute A-games every single day and know that we are here to support you in that, thank you.
Dr. Mills?
I too want to congratulate all of our new hires and I've heard so much about those that are coming from out of town and your skills and your ability and, and we are excited to have you onboard with us and look forward to meeting you later on and talking with you a little bit more upstairs. Also, I want to thank all of you that have come out tonight to support our new parent coordinator, Ms. Jackson. Thank you for your support and the community coming out. I encourage you to come out to all the board meetings that you can come to. I think it's very, very important to have that representation from our community here at our board meetings. You add, you really do add value and you help us in our direction for all of our children. So, and not just that, but please get others to come out too and to volunteer and, and just get behind Ms. Jackson. And we all will get behind her here in the district, but we need the community to get behind as well. Be able to come upstairs afterwards and we can get to chat a little bit.
Thank you, Dr. Mills. We talked about safe and caring schools being our last year's goal, goal number one. This is just the message to the principals, because it was brought up a little bit ago, is that the referral rate was up and discipline was, was recorded more. And we appreciate you doing your job, making sure that those schools are safe. I know it was the, the directive of the superintendent, making sure that we got discipline under control. So, I mean, that's not a statistic that we're looking at. The statistic is, is the overall culture of your school. When the culture survey comes out and we're seeing, seeing the results, that, that, that's really the indication. Because if we're doing our job day in and day out, the children are gonna feel safe and sometimes we do have to discipline children. And, and principals, this board is supporting you in that effort. And don't ever think we're not going to support you. So I wanted to make sure, because these aren't just the superintendent's schools, but it's carried out by everybody there and we want to make sure that we are supporting you. So, and that being said, I, I messed up the other day. I wanna thank Mrs. Holly for making a meeting that I didn't attend. That's not funny, I don't mess up. And when I do, I feel bad. So Mrs. Holly, thank you for stepping in for me and, and, and I would be a bad board chair if I didn't give the opportunity to have the superintendent to say something really quickly because we're, we're hungry.
Well, first of all, I want to thank the board. There were a few things unexpected that occurred tonight. One is the negotiations you've asked Molly to enter into. I can't tell you how blessed and appreciative I am to work for such a cohesive board. And, you know, I've, I've said this before, when I moved my family here, it was probably the best thing that I had ever done from a professional, but not just a professional, but as a parent. Putting my kids in our public schools, it, it really, they've had such a great experience, such a great experience and that's really attributed to the, the principals, the assistant principals, the teachers that have come, that they've come into contact with, my leadership team. I think you send a message as a body of the direction you feel like that the district is going in and I think that's, we're moving in the right direction. To your point, I'm committed to doing the best that I can do to lead the district. But, you know, going back to it takes a village, we don't, we don't work in isolation. We're part of a team and we have a very highly effective team here in St. Lucie County from the, from the administrators and cabinet, all the way down to the principals and the team leaders and the, the grade level chairs, the bus drivers, everybody in the system works together. And just wanted to say, I'm very, very grateful and I'm gonna stop talking because upstairs. Oh, that's right, I'm looking right at him. My family is here, can you please stand up, family? Yes.
The young lady is Meredith, the young man is Maverick and his lovely wife is Heather. Thank you all for coming tonight.
And just to let you know that, that Mrs. Prince is, is one of our public school teachers. Meredith will be starting at one of our public high schools and Maverick is a graduate of Treasure Coast High School, go Titans. So with that being said, I'm looking forward to seeing everyone up on the third floor. I want to congratulate the district for a year well done and I'm, I'm looking so forward to twenty-three, twenty-four, working with our board to do what is best for all students in St. Lucie County, thank you.
Thank you to the Prince family, everybody coming out, this meeting is adjourned.